Hello and welcome to the Pittsburgh City Council Cable Cast Public Hearing from Monday, December 9, 2019. My name is Michael Wentz and with us today is Connor Littenberger, our sign language interpreter. The public hearing will be on the following legislation. The Tax Budget and Citizen Participation Hearing on the Mayor's Proposed 2020 Operating Capital Budget. This concludes the reading for Cable Cast Public Hearing from Monday, December 9, 2019. Thank you and have a wonderful day.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the continuation of Pittsburgh City Council's budget hearings. This morning, we are having Pittsburgh City Council's Public Hearing on the Citizen Participation and the Proposed 2020 Operating Capital Budget. Madam Clerk, is there a bill to read first? There is not. For the record, I would just like to show that we are joined this morning by Councilman O'Connor, Councilwoman Strasburger. I believe Councilwoman Harris will join us shortly. I'm Councilman Kraus. I will be chairing this morning's public hearing. We will go immediately to testimony of registered speakers. When you come to the podium, I'm going to ask that you please begin by giving your name and the neighborhood in which you reside for our public record. Each speaker that has registered will have three minutes to address City Council. If you did not register in advance, after we have exhausted the list of registered speakers, we will open up testimony for those in the audience who wish to speak to Council, and you will be given one minute. We ask that when you come to the microphone, you give your name and the neighborhood in which you reside for our public record. The green light will indicate the start of your three minutes. When the yellow light comes on, you'll have one minute to summarize your thoughts. When the red light comes on, you must relinquish the podium. And I will stress, you must relinquish the podium. Our first registered speaker is Renell Guy. Renell, I see you back there. If you'll come up.
Hey, good morning. Renell Guy, 2317 Good Street, 15214. This is like my 300, 400 time at this podium, and I'm telling y'all the wheels done fell off, but I'm still rolling because I'm not satisfied. I'm not satisfied with the job that you guys are doing. The budget is the city's moral document. I asked people to come on board and work to improve quality of life for people, housing conditions for people, educational outcomes for people, transportation outcomes for people, and I can't realistically tell them if we've made a difference because it's impossible to tell the outcomes that the city has achieved because the budget is so convoluted and opaque. For 20 years, I've been trying to figure out, does the city's stated priorities match where they put their money? And I honestly can tell you that we can't. There's a whole budget line item that says "other" that got $26 million in it. What is that about? And why ain't none of y'all upset about it? It's important to know that when you talk to talk, that you're walking the walk, that you're not just telling us you support equity and you support affordability and you support fair transit when we don't feel it. You're saying you're investing in that, but there's no way for us to tell because the budget is intentionally opaque. And in this age of technology, that needs to end. And we're here, I mean, 25 organizations strong, saying that this ends. This ends now. We are tired. We need you as allies. If we were all in this together, we could have been, we could have been took care of the problems. We all want the same thing, a healthy, safe, decent Pittsburgh for Pittsburghers. So why are we the enemy? Why do you hide where you spend your money at from us, the people that pay your salaries? So let me just say that I'm hoping that this is an opportunity for us to come together and create a process that is inclusive, that is transparent, and outcomes that really are serving the needs and desires of the people that live in our city. Thank you.
Okay, Renell, thank you. Barbara Warwick. Barbara Warwick, are you here? Thank you. You'll be followed by Laura Wiens. Good morning, welcome.
Good morning. Just quickly, I'd like...
Need your name?
Oh, my name is Barb Warwick, and I'm here representing Four Mile Run. Four Mile Run.
Where you live?
On Alexis Street, yeah. So one thing I'd like to note is how much of council isn't here. That's important, right? We're talking to a bunch of empty chairs except for, thank you. At any rate, so I'm here to ask council to divert the funds for the Mon Oakland Connector Project to our community-generated alternative transit plan, Our Money, Our Solutions. I'll go point by point. One, when the public first heard about the MOC project in a Pittsburgh Post-Gazette article from 2015, the plan was clear. The mayor wanted, quote, "a road for rubber tire shuttles, possibly including driverless vehicles that are under development at Cardigan Mellon University." This road and these shuttles would run through Four Mile Run and Shenley Park to connect the future Hazelwood-Green development and CMU. Two, flood mitigation for Four Mile Run was added later, following outcry from my community about this road proposal after a decade of the city ignoring our flooding problem. Yet, the city continues to hold our flood mitigation hostage by coupling it with the building of this road. Three, funding to improve the park during flood mitigation is critical. People coming from the Run and Hazelwood have to cross the train tracks to directly access the rest of the park. Yet, a tunnel safely connecting our path to the other trails in the lake is also being held hostage, only funded as a Phase 2 under the MOC. In other words, a nice-to-have. Four, our neighborhoods need real transit solutions, including safe sidewalks and direct weekend bus service to Oakland for the people of Hazelwood, neither of which the MOC provides. Why? Because it is nothing more than a road through the park. Five, it's time to stop scapegoating DOMI in general and Karina Ricks in particular, as though they are demanding this project despite public opposition. Ms. Ricks has been asked by the mayor to get this road built no matter what. She is simply doing her job. It's time for council to do its job and put a stop to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Laura, welcome. You'll be followed by Ava Resnick Day.
My name is Laura Wiens. I'm the Executive Director of Pittsburghers for Public Transit. I live at 7731 Edgerton Avenue, Pittsburgh, PA 15221. I'm here to speak about the Mon Oakland Connector. This project is the magic bag, as Ziggy has dubbed it. Here inside the bag circa 2009, you see the Mon Oakland Connector appear as a proposed light rail connection between Hazelwood-Green and Oakland and Lawrenceville. 2015, the city applies for the National Smart Cities Grant, and the Mon Oakland Connector is part of a secret proposal to demonstrate autonomous tech with a roadway through to Hazelwood-Green in partnership with CMU and Uber. In 2018, the DOMI asserts this project is going to address public transit deficits of South Oakland, Greenfield, and Hazelwood, and said, "The city will do so by leasing and running driverless on-demand microtransit shuttles." And now we look inside the bag, and the city says, "Well, that autonomous shuttle technology doesn't really exist and probably won't for many years." And so here we are in 2019, and the project is just to build the, quote, "facility through Shenley Park in which speculative private e-mobility technology, including e-scooters, driverless shuttles, and pods, will be given dedicated space to operate." Once named the Mon Oakland Connector, a transit-only cartway, then a trail, now a mobility corridor, its name continues to shift along with its apparent purpose. The verbal gymnastics of this project would be something of a, or had become something of a joke during public meetings, and it would be funny, except when we consider what's at stake. Over the last two years, more than $5 million have apparently been spent, even though it's only at 30% preliminary engineering and hasn't yet broken ground. Last year, DOMI's bond request of $9 million for this project was granted based on an application with fewer than 25 words written on it, including the name of the department, the words "Four Mile Run" written twice, and the sections "Project Description," "Project Justification," "Proposed Deliverables," "Component Budgets," and "Operating Budget Impact" were left blank. There's a checkmark by the metric, quote, "just demonstrated support of the public," end quote, with the line, quote, "depends on which community?" exclamation point typed next to it. That's funny, right? Because it's a magic bag. Money goes in between $16 to $23, according to DOMI's five-year project budget, and what comes out is a mystery. Years of public meetings have demonstrated unwavering opposition to the Shenley Park roadway by Four Mile Run and Panther Hollow, the neighborhoods most affected, and at best polite confusion by Oakland and Hazelwood residents. We deserve better. There are mobility and pedestrian safety needs in Hazelwood and Greenfield and gaps and connections to neighboring Oakland-Squirrel Hill, and residents know how to fix them. Residents have named the solutions to these problems in countless public processes: sidewalks, pedestrian crossing signals, weekend bus service, close our trail system gaps. And we're here with a letter, which I'm going to give to council, signed by 23 community stakeholders and a petition with an additional 550 individuals calling on City Council to move the roadway money and to invest in transportation that is equitable, effective, and beneficial to all while harmful to none. Thank you.
Anyone that has brought written comment and you wish to leave that behind, you're welcome to do so. You can leave it here with the clerk, and we'll make certain that it's distributed to all nine members. Ava, welcome. Good morning. You'll be followed by Courtney Echelman.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm Eva Resnick Day, a community organizer with the Sierra Club, live at 504 Peeble Street, 15221. Thank you for the City Council people who are here today and listening to us. I was honored to be invited here by the Economic Justice Circle, a grassroots coalition of community leaders, activists, and organizers committed to creating an economic justice agenda for Pittsburgh with a racial equity lens. EJC has dug into the budget, learning how to read it, interpret it, and influence it. And what they found was the reason that our team has never succeeded in this endeavor. There's little information for residents to understand how the budget connects to their daily lives or the mayor's priorities, and limited time to have the community respond to proposed projects. It's unclear who is making budget priority decisions and how they're being made. With the recent studies showing Pittsburgh as one of the worst places to live for black women, it is more important than ever that we can show how our money is being used to improve the lives of our marginalized communities, that those voices have a say in where our money goes. We must move equity from concept to action and climate action from concept to investment. We must, though the budget lists equity and climate action as priorities, it's near impossible to see how that actually tracks to city investment. So major processes and changes need to be implemented next year, and I know EJC and Sierra Club would be delighted to help. But there's also a few low-hanging fruit items that should be in the budget this year if the city prioritizes climate action. So recently, this council passed historic and exciting net-zero legislation for new city buildings and those undergoing renovations, yet I was disappointed to not see funds for those renovations in the capital budget. Legislation without investment is empty. The Sustainability Office has shown that in order to reach the mayor's stated 50% greenhouse gas reduction goal for the city by 2030, they need a target of seven to eight major renovations per year. The target for 2020 is two projects, and that's currently not even fully funded by the capital budget. So this year's budget should be updated to reflect having investment for those renovations. The second low-hanging fruit item I'd like to address is upgrading our streetlights. The city's streetlights account for almost half of our city's municipal energy use, yet our current streetlight technology is more than 60 years old. Updating streetlights to LED bulbs would see energy savings up to 70% and save significant money for the city. So we're talking about saving nearly a quarter of all the city's energy use in one go with a payback period of less than five years, yet that proposal was rejected from the 2019 budget. And it's not just an energy issue. Updating streetlights can and must ensure that all neighborhoods, including areas with a history of disinvestment, are lit equitably. So overall, a more open and transparent budget process that is accessible and understandable to the public will only strengthen our city, our programs, and lead to city investments that match our priorities. And we all want to help, so let's do this together. Thank you.
Courtney, you're not here. How about Ziggy Edwards? Okay, Ziggy, you're next. You'll be followed by Matthew Peters. Good morning, welcome.
Hi, everybody. I'm Ziggy Edwards. I live in the Run. For a year now, I've been speaking to you about the ill-advised Mon Oakland Connector Plan. This multimillion-dollar project was not planned to benefit affected communities, and now that all the MOC proponents' feel-good justifications have proven absurd, they admit Hazelwood-Green is driving the project. The MOC lifts developers' and foundations' needs above ours using our own tax dollars. We can't allow it. Meanwhile, DOMI Director Karina Ricks, while just doing her job, just mentioned at our last public MOC meeting that they've applied for a grant to fix the hazardous sidewalks of city-owned parcels along Irvine Street and Hazelwood. I'm not sure why the state would take an interest, given that Pittsburgh officials had no plans to use city funds on this public safety issue, yet committed more than $18 million of our capital budget to build a road for a privately operated shuttle servicing a privately-owned development. But if DOMI gets the grant, it frees more MOC funds for other neglected infrastructure needs in our communities, needs listed in our community-generated alternative mobility plan. I'm glad to see signs that you're at least considering concerns my neighbors and I have raised over months and years. Now we need you to act. We need one council member to introduce a budget amendment that reallocates the 2019 MOC funds to items in our plan for 2020. I hope it's you, Councilman O'Connor, because MOC affects your constituents most. Then we need City Council to vote yes on this amendment. I understand the process will require additional steps, but you can get it started today. You can demonstrate to the people of Pittsburgh that you speak with our voices, not the voices whispering in our mayor's ear of plans for technology and development projects that land fully formed on our communities. Councilman O'Connor, you know our streets and understand why the MOC will harm some neighborhoods in your district beyond diverting limited resources. The Run is unique in a city filled with special places. Topography makes my neighborhood what it is, but there's more to it than what you can see on a map or from the parkway. We have a real community here, and it's facing existential threats. We are at risk of being erased, not only by flooding, but by those who see our community in Shenley Park as barriers to their vision of economic growth. Pittsburgh residents should be the ones driving and shaping plans that will affect our communities for generations. As council members, you are the ones in this room with us, the ones who are here. I come here because I can talk to you and look you in the eye, because you can carry our message to people who would never give us an appointment. Today, you have the power to do much more. With this amendment, you can stop harm and bring improvements to communities affected by the MOC. I've been told you'll never stop this road. There's too much money behind it. I know the courage to make a stand comes easier when you're directly in the crosshairs like we are, but this fight is much bigger than our neighborhoods, and all over Pittsburgh, people are standing with us because they know it. We've worked hard to bring you this opportunity to do the right thing, and I hope you take it. If you don't call for the amendment today, you will have other chances to do so, and you'll be hearing from us. Thank you.
Matthew, are you, Matthew, are you here?
Oh.
Okay. Matthew, you'll be followed by Melissa Murray.
Okay. Pardon the luggage.
Meeting started at 10.
Good morning. My name is Matt Peters. I'm the Chair of the Urban Ag Team, Agriculture Team for Hazelwood. I have a three-page letter that I have sent to some of you by email. I'll read it as fast as I can in my three minutes, right? The Urban Agriculture Team stands to be directly affected by this proposed roadway or corridor through Shenley Park, especially by the Sylvan Avenue aspect of Phase 2 as outlined by DOMI. Our primary community garden is located proximate to this site. Our mission of sustainability and ecological consciousness also gives us standing as regards to the associated stormwater and green infrastructure improvements to the park. Healthy and robust water resources are essential to any successful agricultural operation from a house plant to the wheat fields of Nebraska. Although PWSA resources are more than adequate for supplementing our yearly rainfall, the presence of native springs in the proposed project area, and the consequences, good or bad, of stormwater management activity associated with this proposal, are of great interest to the team. The issues are many and complicated. Thank you for continuing the public comment process. First, I will speak to stormwater management. The stormwater projects should be fully funded and supported. I'm pleased to see some of them apparently are already in progress. Further, the design considerations should include the complete watershed, not just the stream corridor, but the forested slopes above, and even the city streets and the stormwater sewers that empty into it, as a complete ecological unit. The PWSA and the Pittsburgh Parks Conservancy must work closely together, along with other city agencies like Urban Forestry, nonprofit groups such as Tree Pittsburgh, and others, to ensure that the stormwater enhancement is, to the greatest degree, an enhancement of these ecosystem services that forest and wetland habitats provide. While these necessary improvements have been linked to the parallel roadway considerations, and there are strong arguments both for and against doing so grounded in both economic and ecological sensibilities, the controversy over the roadway proposal must not be allowed to cloud the fundamental issue that the watershed and stormwater aspects are essential for human safety, while transportation considerations are primarily for human convenience. Certainly, there are safety issues associated with an effective transportation network, such as ambulances or fire trucks getting there or pedestrians not getting run over. But by and large, our transportation system is designed for vehicles, not for people. This engineering bias has contributed to social problems ranging from flooding to air pollution to cancer and diabetes. The current proposal attempts to address this engineering bias with a conscious effort to focus on stormwater and green infrastructure, which is right and proper. Any new construction must be thoroughly examined from an environmental and ecological standpoint with special consideration for the dire context of climate change.
You're welcome to leave your remarks behind, and we'll distribute them to members.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Matthew.
And I'm glad I ended on a note, climate change. There's nothing more important today.
Melissa Murray, are you with us? Okay, welcome. You'll be followed by Sue Scanlon.
Good morning. My name's Melissa Murray. I live at 152 South Fairmont Street, 15206, part of District 9. I'm here on behalf of Greater Pittsburgh Community Food Bank to talk about the Community Development Block Grant, asking for your support. I'm a fairly new resident to the city. I moved here about six months ago, and I work within our marketing and communications department. So one of the big parts of my job is storytelling, and that's been very beneficial in being a new resident to the city because I've been able to get out into Pittsburgh and the surrounding community to learn more about the people who live in southwest PA and face food insecurity every single day. And one thing that I've really learned through this experience is that food insecurity is not necessarily what people think it is. It's a single mom who's working three jobs in order to put food on the table and give her kids something to eat, but maybe she's skipping a meal because she doesn't have enough to feed her entire family. It could be a senior who is disabled and not able to get out of the house in order to support themselves and put food on their table, or a family who is hit with unexpected medical bills and can't buy groceries because their medical bills are their first priority. So I've been able to meet a lot of people within Pittsburgh who are food insecure, and it looks different for everyone, and it's not what a lot of people think that it is. And in order to keep our mission going and in order to support these people who are food insecure and are facing these health challenges because of that, we need the support of the Community Development Block Grant to keep our mission going. I've been able to go to some of our produce distributions, some of our summer food sites and things like that, in order to talk with these people and tell their stories of the people who are serving and the people who are serving them, whether that's volunteers at food pantries or people who are passing out produce at Produce to People distributions. And there's one woman who sticks with me. She is a volunteer who serves food during a summer food program. She serves breakfast and lunch in the Hill District, and she brings food from home, out of her own refrigerator, out of her own pantry, in order to supplement the food that she is given through the food bank and other sources, in order to make sure that these kids know that they're valued. So whether that's giving them bacon for breakfast that she pulled from her fridge or putting together a party at the end of the summer to give these kids backpacks and school supplies, she makes sure that these kids know that they are appreciated, and that's something that we're asking you to support as well. So through this Community Development Block Grant, we're asking for your financial support to keep these programs going, also so that people like her do not have to bring food from home in order to make these kids know that they have a purpose and know that they will have food on the table at the end of the day. Thank you.
Thank you. Sue, are you here? You are. You'll be followed by Kelsey Krebs.
Hi, Sue Scanlon, 721 Corbin Street, 15122. You reminded, Matt, that the meeting started at 10. I think you forgot a couple people, too.
Thank you. You have your three minutes.
I'm here representing PPT, along with my brothers and sisters from the Run, about the DOMI project and the money we feel could be used to increase bus transit service on the 93 on the weekends, and the 75 could come across the Hot Metal Bridge into Hazelwood and Hazelwood-Green. It would serve more people of the county, the taxpayers, than the original plan of the roadway with the private transportation. There's a lot of people that use that 93. It connects Hazelwood to Greenfield to Squirrel Hill to Bloomfield to Lawrenceville. It travels all through the county. It would connect people to food, housing, doctors, family, to life. It's a lifeline. And the 75 is pretty much the same. It travels through Morningside, East Liberty, Oakland, and would also increase the, it would be used, it would be well-used. So instead of the $14 million going towards a private roadway that we really don't need, we could probably look in and connect up with Port Authority and get these people, all the people of Hazelwood, the service that they deserve.
Okay, thank you. Kelsey, you're here, welcome. You'll be followed by Dylan Rook. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Kelsey Krebs, 16 Gaskell Street, 15211. I am the Western Pennsylvania Outreach Coordinator with Penn Future. We're an environmental advocacy organization working to protect our air, water, and land and working to build sustainable communities for the future. The Pittsburgh Action Climate Action Plan aims to reduce greenhouse gas emissions by 50% by 2030 and 80% by 2050. It also aims to reduce energy and water use by 50% by 2030. It's been estimated that the buildings here in the city account for 80% of Pittsburgh's emissions and a significant portion of the city's energy use. I was excited to see the city of Pittsburgh's proposed net-zero legislation earlier this fall, and I'm disappointed to see that these proposed changes were not reflected in the capital budget for this year. And I really think that this should be updated specifically to lay out the new buildings and anticipated renovations with their reflective costs to net zero. It's important to not only propose great legislation, especially with the face of the climate crisis, but it's also really important to ensure its dedicated funding. Without both, great ideas are just bad ideas. With the effects of climate change already happening in our city, especially with our stormwater issues and our excessive energy use, it's really important to move these climate action plans to action. Pittsburgh is often used as an example city in the battle against the climate crisis, and it's really important that we continue to shine because we're actually doing the good work. So thank you for your time.
Dylan, good morning. Welcome. You'll be followed by Justin Gilmore. Welcome.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Dylan Rook, resident of Hazelwood, also a freelance worker and small business owner. I run a shared workspace for other freelancers and small business owners. Been an active part of the Greater Neighborhood Plan in Hazelwood over the, over months over the last year, and many conversations with other homeowners and other small business owners about what kind of developments we would like to see. And we worked really hard, and I know, working with Corey O'Connor at the Hazelwood Initiative as well, you're very aware of those, those needs and those concerns that our neighborhood has. I personally, and I know many of my neighbors here are pretty concerned about the allocated funds for the Mon Oakland roadway. We participated in some of the meetings about how that would benefit Hazelwood, and it seemed like a pretty apparent add-on, trying to extend a path that is very clearly not in the plan that you see in your handouts today. in the plan that you see in your handouts today. I just want to remind us of some of the history of Hazelwood and development. We have seen roadways and mobility planned before in the Mon Valley Expressway. That failed plan has left our main business district as best described as missing teeth. And for small business owners trying to get an affordable start to launch their own economic activities is really hard to kind of make those kind of jumps and those kind of investments with not a lot of opportunity. It's been systematically disinvested over decades. I think it is our responsibility as the city, and it's your responsibility as a city council, to make sure that those funds are used in a way that benefits the residents first, the people that exist here first. When I look at the Mon Valley, the Mon-Oakland roadway, it's very clear that those are for for big corporate entities to benefit mostly from, with the residents only seen as an afterthought. And we've been accused in meetings that we are afraid of change, that Hazelwood or The Run or other affected neighborhoods are afraid of change, and we are not afraid of change. We welcome change. We welcome opportunity. We just think that that opportunity should include us from the beginning, that it should be transparent. And as we talk about change, I invite you to change. I think that the city has to change. I think we have to change the way that we operate, the way that we do development. We have to make sure that development starts first with the residents, first with the stakeholders that exist in the neighborhood. And so I invite you to change with us as we move into the future together.
I'm sorry, I lost track. That was Justin, right? Bill McDowell.
No, that was Dylan.
That was Dylan, I'm sorry. So, we are going to Justin Gilmore. Are you here, Justin?
I'm here.
Okay, then we're going to go with Bill McDowell.
Right here.
Hi, Bill, welcome. And you'll be followed by Adam Morgan. I crossed my name out too early, that one name. Do you need help, sir? You sure? We can provide a microphone for you at your seat, sir. Would that be helpful?
I'm good.
Okay.
Right here, thanks.
Thank you.
Good morning. And thank you for the opportunity to comment today. My name is Bill McDowell, and I live on the North Side, Pittsburgh, at 401 West Commons. I want to strongly urge you to vote no on the Mon-Oakland Connector, simply because I'm an advocate around accessibility all my adult life, and I don't see accessibility to this project. The shuttles I read about in articles made no mention of accessibility on these shuttles. We have an ADA law, let's not forget. It's going to be 30 years since the signing, this next July in 2020. Why, I ask, are these shows going to be inaccessible? It appears I and those with...who use wheelchairs are shut out, not welcome, on this transit. PPT's alternatives are to extend the 75 bus across the Hazelwood, the Hot Metal Bridge, and the 93 in the Hazelwood to provide weekend service. We want to have ADA-compliant curts, along with safe signal crossings, walkable sidewalks. People with disabilities need and deserve accessibility. You can provide it. Will you? Or will you shut us out? That's the decision you make with your vote. Vote no. Thank you.
Hi, Adam. Good morning, welcome. You'll be followed by Homer Craig.
Good morning. I am Adam Morgan, and I live in Council District 5 at 229 Trobridge Street in Hazelwood. I appreciate this opportunity to provide comments as this council shapes the city's 2020 budget. Despite the relatively healthy economy, the need for food assistance throughout Pittsburgh remains. Food insecurity is still higher today than it was before the Great Recession of 2008. Unfortunately, the generous supply of donated food from our community is insufficient in fully addressing this need. The resources provided through CDBG to the food bank and our member agencies has complemented those community donations and helped provide enough resources to provide food for all of our neighbors. As the food bank's advocacy coordinator, I would like to put your allocation of CDBG funds in a broader context. The truth is that the support from the city through CDBG is ever more important and needed as we experience an ongoing assault on food assistance programs from the federal administration. Just this year, the U.S. Department of Agriculture has proposed three separate rule changes to SNAP that would cut food stamp benefits by $23 billion for 11 million people across the country. This continued assault on SNAP will only make the demand for food, for the food bank services grow. Due to the 2017 tax law and sweeping changes to the U.S. Tax Code, people are donating less. Individual giving continues to be the largest source of donations for nonprofits. However, in 2018, giving by individuals fell by 3.8%. This is the largest decline in individual charitable giving since 1987 despite a relatively good economy. The administration has also proposed a rule change that would gradually lower the official poverty line by applying a smaller cost-of-living adjustment each year. Over the years, hundreds of thousands of Americans would be defined out of poverty without any meaningful change or improvement to their financial situation. Millions of people would see their benefits slashed or eliminated outright. So in conclusion, CDBG funds are extremely important as they help boost the strange budgets of the city's food assistance organizations, which act as Pittsburgh's first line of defense against hunger. As a result, these funds will help both organizations and the individuals they serve who are struggling with tough decisions about how to spend their limited resources. With the help of CDBG funds, the impact of the efforts provided by our community members dedicated to feeding people in need can be maximized. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam. Hi, Mr. Craig, welcome. Councilman O'Connor had to step away momentarily, but his office is represented here through his chief of staff.
I understand that, and Councilman O'Connor explained that. I concur. My name is Homer Craig. I've lived on Mon Hill Street in Hazelwood for 80 years, except for a little bit more than 13 years of military service. I concur with what my neighbors and friends and community have said. I don't deal in emotion, I deal in facts, so I'm going to skip all that. I recognize that Corey was here, but I also recognize, and please make it a matter of the record of the secretary that's taking records here, that council people express their concern by their presence. And this shows you and the people how concerned you are, whatever your excuse is or explanation. It might be legitimate, but you ain't here. I'm not talking to you that are here. I'm talking to you that ain't here. The point is, though, that I'm not going to take up too much of your time. I'm not going to beat a dead horse. But I do have a question that I would like to have answered, and Corey is my representative, so I'm going to charge him with getting an answer to our community. Our community being Hazelwood, Squirrel Hill, Greenfield. The rest of you, you know, you got your own representatives. I want to know, now, if I were still working, I would have to file an income tax return at the end of the year, and that would show me what I spent on house, medicine, gasoline, so on and so forth. So I want to know from city council, I want to be presented to the public, how much and where that $5 million that you've already spent went to. I'd like to see an accountability of that. And do your job, city council. You're spending our money. This is my money. This is their money. So tell me where it's going. You ain't doing your job. You tell me that you need so many million dollars for a busway that you call on a path through Shingle Park. You can't even tell me who's making it and how it's going to be propelled. Is it gasoline? Is it solar power? Is it battery power? You are not doing your due diligence. Now, like I said, I'm not being emotional, I'm asking for the facts. Like Joe Friday said, just the facts.
Kelsey Eckenroth, are you here? Okay, that's great. You'll be followed by Tiaria Collins. I hope I said that right.
No, you didn't. It was a fact.
Thank you for reminding me then. I thought I was actually being kind. Go ahead, please.
Good morning. My name is Kelsey Eckenroth. I live in the North Side at 1350 Federal Street, 15212. I am a registered dietitian at the Greater Pittsburgh Community Food Bank, and today I'm here to ask that the city continue to support the Community Development Block Grant Program. And I wanted to talk a little bit about the importance of adequate nutrition, especially in Pittsburgh communities that are facing food insecurity. Food insecurity is a critical public health issue that many of the households that we serve face. When families don't have access to healthy nutritious foods, research shows that they're at an increased risk for developing nutrition-related diseases like type 2 diabetes and heart disease. Additionally, diet quality suffers when households experience food insecurity, and as a result, they're more likely to purchase cheap, highly-processed foods that are high in sodium and added sugars and those foods that are readily available at local convenience stores and gas stations. But consistent access to healthy nutritious foods like fresh produce, lean meats, and dairy can help to prevent and manage nutrition-related chronic diseases, and they're necessary to promote good health throughout the lifecycle. The problem is, is that fresh foods are often more difficult for food insecure households to access due to cost and limited availability in neighborhoods considered to be food deserts in Pittsburgh. A survey of households utilizing our food bank resources found that 75% of households have difficulty accessing fresh produce, 79% have difficulty accessing meat and fish, and nearly 40% have difficulty accessing dairy. And when we asked households to select five foods that they needed their pantry or assistance program to offer more of, the top selected choices were fresh and healthy foods. At the food bank, we're committed to ensuring that food insecure households have access to healthy foods, not only because it's necessary for promoting good health, but also because the households that we serve value and request these foods. That's why I'm asking that the council continue to support the Community Development Block Grant Program so that the food bank can continue to provide households with the nutritious foods that they want and need for their health. The funds provided to the food bank through this program allow the food bank to provide our agencies and pantries with healthy foods to be distributed to families experiencing food insecurity. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Tiara, Tiara Collins, and I live at 5017 Second Avenue, and I have been a resident of Hazelwood for 13 years. I only heard about the Mon Valley-Oakland Connector project this year, and it's supposed to fix our transportation problems. The thing is, I've never heard anyone in Hazelwood complain that there isn't a road for private companies to run shuttles through Shingle Park. My neighbors and I do have transportation needs. However, every day our kids get off the school bus in front of the Hazelwood Library and have to cross busy Second Avenue, trying not to get hit because the pedestrian buttons has been broken for the entire time I've lived here. We need the city to put flashing lights on Second Avenue and signs to slow down the cars that come flying through our business district. Just a few months ago, a pedestrian got hit trying to cross the street in front of the Elizabeth Pharmacy. And also, as a mother of five children, we need to slow down this traffic. This traffic is 25 miles per hour, they're flying through like at 40, 50 miles. We also need a sign that says "special needs in the area." I have a seven-year-old with Down Syndrome, and I live on that avenue, so crossing the street for us is a must, and we do need something done. Lots of the sidewalks are cracked, they're missing, and many don't have wheelchair ramps at the curb, which forces people with disabilities to drive in the street. This is not news to anyone. We've been asking the city to fix these problems for years. I've been part of every public meeting with the city officials in Hazelwood for the last eight years, and I'm an active member in my PTA. And it's not just our streets and sidewalks that should be improved. If we're going to get our transportation needs met, we need more Port Authority bus service. Our weekend service is horrible. The 93, our main bus to Oakland, and the jobs and the food across access to John Eagles and Greenfield and Squirrel Hill doesn't operate on Saturdays and Sundays. If you're sick, you have to take two buses to get to the hospital in Oakland, and that costs us heck, and that costs us more money because the transfer fee is a full $7. If we have Connect cards, what we're asking for to run weekend service on the 93 and to extend the 75 bus from the South Side into Hazelwood would really make a difference in my community and would serve Hazelwood Greens' needs at the same time. Instead of the Mon Valley, the Mon-Oakland Connector, the city should listen to our community and put this $16 million towards our solution. It's our money after all. We're calling on the city to make sure the community voice is at the forefront, and this is all the budget, the budget decisions. Thank you so very much.
Thanks, Ms. Collins. Erin Malloy, welcome. You'll be followed by Justin Macy. Good morning.
Thank you, good morning. My name's Erin Malloy. I live at 2235 Walton Avenue. I'm happy to be here to discuss the distribution of Community Block Grant. I'm a native of Pittsburgh. I'm a current constituent of Councilman Coghill. I'm also donor relations manager for Greater Pittsburgh Community Food Bank. Our mission is to feed people in hunger and need and to mobilize the community to end hunger. I'm here for the latter part of that mission. In my work, it is a privilege to get to know the donors and supporters of the food bank. We have over 6,000 volunteers every year, many community partners. We also administer and receive funds from many government programs, historically block grants among them. In my conversations with donors, despite the efforts of many to weaponize food assistance programs, it is a nonpartisan issue. It is an issue people care about. We have one supporter in particular, I'll call her Sue. Sue is a woman who sends a letter to the food bank every month, along with a donation of $5. We recently found out that Sue is actually a participant in one of the programs that we administer, providing food for needy seniors. So Sue, who qualifies for assistance, finds money in her limited budget to support her neighbors in need. I know there are many competing interests that the council has to weigh in determining what to do with these block grant funds, but I suggest that you consider what Sue can do, and Sue finds money in her funds to support her neighbors. I respectfully ask that you do the same.
Justin, you're here. Good morning, welcome. You'll be followed by Jay Walker.
All right. My name is Justin Macy. I live in The Run at 28 Alexis Street. My two daughters are fifth-generation residents of The Run. I have filed numerous right-to-know requests with the city and PWSA. Currently, both have failed to supply everything that we have asked for or supply adequate reasoning explaining why they could not be turned over. Documents that have been turned over have been incomplete. And since the residents found out about this roadway in a newspaper article, we have been fed nothing but lies from the city and Domi. These lines range from who this roadway was intended for to ridership numbers being fraudulent and inflated. Mr. Fitzgerald eventually came out and said this roadway is... Mr. Fitzgerald eventually came out and said, "This roadway is not for you," meaning the residents, "it's for the universities." Right-to-know documents support this and say that the roadway's sole purpose is to entice developers and businesses to Hazelwood Green and offer no significant benefit to the public. We have also been told that the flood control comes first, which is another lie. While talking to a PWSA representative at the last roadway meeting, he informed me that PWSA was told that the city owns the land and controls what happens to it, and they are to design for this roadway. From right-to-know documents, the open channel and the flood plains were discussed needing to be downsized to only accommodate a one-year flood in order to make space for this roadway. This directly shows that the roadway takes precedence and interferes with the flood mitigation. In addition to adding impervious roadway and removing a significant amount of vegetation, they will aggravate the flooding. We were also told that they were going to preserve the park, and the roadway will not harm the parkness of the park. The right-to-know documents reveal needing to reduce the size of the existing field to the size of a youth soccer field and eliminating the existing parking, rendering this park amenity useless and inaccessible to those that frequently use it. Soccer games and lacrosse practices regularly overfill the existing lots, but it needs to be removed to accommodate this roadway. Karina Ricks has stated that this road is not a long-term solution. It will not be able to handle future traffic loads. Don Smith indicated, "We'll just put an imperfect connector road in there, and we'll figure something out later." Mr. Gilman, this is my favorite quote, is quoted as saying, "This overall project is a cluster. You can fill in the rest." With the endless lies, missing deadline after deadline, missing promises to stakeholders, we, the public, the residents of the Run, Panther Hollow, Oakland, Hazelwood, Squirrel Hill, and other surrounding neighborhoods have lost our trust in this project, so much so that we have come up with a community-generated mobility plan that addresses what we actually need. I urge you to withdraw funding from the imperfect, non-sustainable cluster of a roadway that negatively impacts flood mitigation and degrades two parks and reallocate the funds to the community-generated mobility plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Hi, Jay. Welcome. You'll be followed by Karen Dryer.
Hi. My name is Jay Walker. I live at 5806 Howe Street, 15232, Council District 8. I'm a member of Pittsburgh's Republic Transit, and I'm also the chair of the Allegheny County Green Party. And like one-fifth of our residents, I don't own a car, so public transit is my main form of transportation. I'd like to start out by saying that, I'm going to say "we" a lot, because instead of using the city of Pittsburgh, I'm going to use "we" because we are the city of Pittsburgh. So I attended a bunch of the community meetings that we hosted in Hazelwood and the Run, and here are some of the reasons for the Mon Oakland Connector project that we stated at the meeting. One of the reasons given was that this project was for the communities of Hazelwood and the Run. At all of the meetings that I attended, nobody seemed to really be looking for this project. So that didn't really seem to pan out. Another reason that was given, and this is the one I'm going to elaborate on, was that this is an important mobility link between Hazelwood and the Run and Oakland. And that reason blew my mind. The hired Michael Baker consultants didn't seem to be aware that there was already a bus that connected the two neighborhoods. They did not speak about it, at least at the earlier meetings. This bus runs infrequently, only on the weekends, all while dealing with car traffic on the roads. If we wanted to improve the transportation link between the neighborhoods of Hazelwood and Oakland, we would run this bus more frequently, we would run it on weekends, we would dedicate our street space to these buses so that they could run more efficiently. I also wanted to quickly tie this to our Climate Action Plan 3.0. In our plan, we stated that the goal was to cut driving by 50%. A robust public transit system like the one Port Authority and ATU are working to provide is the best way to get people out of cars to meet our common goal. I can already hear you all passing the buck and stating that we don't control Port Authority because it's a county authority. If we truly were concerned with transportation between Hazelwood and Oakland, we would fund the public transportation system that serves our community. We would commit local funding to our county Port Authority system so that it can make the transit improvements we all need. I'd like to ask my councilperson, Councilperson Strasburger, to introduce a budget amendment to reallocate our money from the Mon Oakland Mobility Corridor Project. This money would be much better served as a start of local funding for the actual transit system that the Port Authority and ATU are actively providing. Thank you.
Hi, Karen. Good morning. Welcome. You'll be followed by William Britton.
Good morning. I'm Karen Dryer, and I live in Brighton Heights on the north side of Pittsburgh in Council District 1. I also work at Greater Pittsburgh Community Food Bank, helping people to access a variety of food assistance programs. And I'm here today to encourage council to allocate CDBG funds to food pantries and to the food bank. Food is for health. When people don't have enough food to eat or enough of the right foods, they have short-term and long-term health effects. If you have a disease such as diabetes, you will immediately feel the impact of not having the right food or not having enough food. Even if you don't have a chronic disease such as that, you will feel long-term effects over time from your body not being able to do what it's supposed to do because of not having enough to eat. I hear stories about families who the parents sacrifice their food so that their children can eat. Food is also for learning. From our youngest citizens to our oldest, we are all learners, and we all need to be, especially in a day and age of change and technology changes. And so if people don't have enough to eat, they are not able to learn. These funds allow families to have enough, seniors to have enough, and children to have enough. Food is also for community. Me and my neighbors, about 15, 20 of us every year, have a very small cookout. I won't even call it a block party. It's not quite that large. And some people bring food, some people just come and help put it together. But it gives us the opportunity to talk beyond just passing each other's. We go about our business every day. And we are fortunate. That brings us together once a year in ways that nothing else does, where you can get beyond the basics of neighborliness. And lastly, food is for everyone. With your ability to allocate these funds to ensure that people in our neighborhoods have enough to eat, please play your part so that everybody in the city of Pittsburgh can be healthy and whole. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. William? Good morning. Welcome. You'll be followed by Yvonne Francine Brown, but I don't see her here, so you'll be followed by Courtney Vita. Good morning. Welcome.
Good morning. My name is Bill Britton. I live at 28 Wilkins Road. I own and operate Shady Side Nursery, and I am a property owner on the lower part of Greenfield Avenue. I've been following the over-four-year saga of the proposed Mon Oakland Connector through Shenley Park. The roadway will directly affect the street my property sits on. The street's part of the proposed route, and I have concerns about how it will affect myself and other residents on the street. I have numerous questions about this project, including, will the roadway cause heavier traffic on Greenfield Avenue? Will it affect my ability to keep good tenants by taking away their on-street parking? Will it cause the property taxes to balloon, which will harm my ability to provide affordable rent? I'm also wondering why tax dollars are going to enormous private development projects involving large private developers who have the ear of the mayor. When will the city subsidize small business and investments that provide me with tax abatements? Another important question is, what is the plan for the lower part of the Greenfield Avenue? The street is part of the route, but the details have been kept a secret. I have serious issues with all those unanswered questions, and as a tax-paying citizen, we deserve to know the answer. I support the alternative plan proposed by PPT as a conservative and transparent use of our tax dollars.
Great. Thank you. Well, appreciate it. Courtney, are you with us? Good morning. Welcome. Tom Hoffman, you'll be next. Good morning.
Good morning. Hello. I'm Courtney Marinage Vita. I'm the Director of Trail Development, representing Friends of the Riverfront. We help build and develop the Heritage Trail in the city of Pittsburgh. First, I just want to thank you guys for having us here today to publicly comment on this. But the one thing we would like to address from Friends of the Riverfront is the concern that there is no funding in the budget for trail development or trail maintenance. This is a trail that sees over 820,000 users a year, bringing in $8.3 million in economic impact. And we have a concern that, you know, we've been told, "You want to fill the gaps." We can't fill the gaps with no money. There has to be money for us to apply for grants. We have a major project in the Strip District to extend the Strip District Trail an additional mile. There's no funding to do it. The city insists on controlling and owning the trail, but that puts us at a limited position to enhance and improve the trail as not only a recreational asset to the city, but also an active transportation corridor. Also, in regards to the maintenance, we are out there every day and every week with volunteers trying to do as much maintenance as we can. However, we do have sections of the trail that are in desperate need of repaving. The Chateau section is literally falling into the river. There needs to be money to improve this asset. It's a huge economic asset and transportation asset for the people of the city, and also maintaining it as a non-motorized trail. I mean, besides accessibility vehicles for those who need them, but this is a non-motorized trail, so we do also stress concerns in regards to the Mon Oakland Connector about motorized vehicles also being with recreational users. That's not a trail. That's a road. So that was from our perspective. Thank you again for having us here today.
Okay. Thank you. Good morning, Tom. Welcome. You'll be followed by Joanna Demming.
Thank you. My name's Tom Hoffman. I live in that part of Point Breeze that's represented by Ricky Burgess. I've been here, I moved here in 1979, and the Pirates won the World Series and the Steelers won the Super Bowl, so I thought, well, it's a pretty good place to stay. I raised three kids here. They're not exactly kids anymore, but they did go all the way through public school, from kindergarten to high school. My son's studying economics at CMU now. My daughter's doing chemistry at MIT. And my stepson's turned his love for animals into a career here in Pittsburgh, so I'm sort of committed to the place. And on my phone, I have this app called Flipboard, and it gives me news and stuff like that, and it learns what I click on. And I click on articles about climate change and climate chaos, and it's sort of learned that's what sends me a steady diet. And the wheels are like really coming off the bus, you know? And in the immortal words of one of my favorite rock groups, The Talking Heads, you know, I know I'm dating myself. I get it. I get it. This ain't no party. This ain't no disco. This ain't no fooling around. And I say to myself, you know, like, what kind of mess are we leaving for my three kids? And so that's why I'm here today. And the problem is that back when the Talking Heads were popular, we could have done something, we didn't. And so now we're really stuck, and we really have to do some stuff really quickly and not just talk about it, and that means spending some, like, real money. So I used to work for a labor union, and we used to organize workplaces, and we would have lists by department and assess people whether they were going to vote for the union or not. And our way of deciding where to work was biggest worst first. The biggest departments that hated the union the most, that's where you worked. So if you look at our energy use, the streetlights are almost half of our energy, and the current technology is about 60 years old. I was 10 then. That was a while ago. And we have CMU and Pitt and Google and Duolingo, our new unicorn, and that's kind of an embarrassment. And a $15 million investment with a payback of five years would help fix that. And as my son, who studies economics, would say, that's kind of a no-brainer. So I think we should do that and put that back in the budget. I think it's not in there, although it's kind of hard to tell because the budget's a little hard to read. So, thank you.
All right, Tom. Thank you. Good morning, Joanna. You're followed by Carlin Lombardo. Morning.
Good morning. Thank you guys for being here and listening to us. My name's Joanna Demming. I'm the Executive Director for Fineview in Perry Hilltop Citizens Council. We join the Economic Justice Circle because we believe we need a better process for creating our city budget. We need greater investment in under-invested communities like ours, and we need a system to track the outcomes from a racial and economic standpoint. Someone once told me, "If you can't understand the financial report, the county isn't doing their job." So I think if people are having trouble understanding it, we need to do a better job of explaining it. We'd like to see council and the mayor's office work more proactively with groups like ours. I know it probably depends on the community, but we'd like to see that. We would like to see at the budget, more budget meetings, and at the budget meetings, opportunities to list specific projects that we want to see done. It stays pretty high-level, and then doesn't feel like you can really share your priorities in a quantitative way that's going to be captured. We're grateful for several items that are included in the budget, namely the EMS station on Lafayette, as well as the Swindoll Bridge. We want to make sure the Charles Street overpass is included with that Swindoll Bridge repairs. We're still waiting on the Henderson retaining wall because the money, I don't know, keeps getting scooped up for landslides and other things. For years and years, our residents have watched our thriving business district and our homes become vacant, become blighted, be torn down. It's time to reverse that trend. We have to invest in the people of our communities. We have to invest above and beyond what we've done in the past in order to right a wrong. When we created the Ousing Opportunity Fund, it was intended as, you know, something that would go above and beyond what we're doing because there's a crisis. However, I am confused that the city keeps cutting money to the URA's housing funds, 35% cut. And this is at a point when the city is advocating for more housing tax credit projects, which is amazing. We got five instead of three, but how do we get them done? And we get them done with money, and if we don't fund the URA, we're not going to see the outcomes that we need. Regarding transportation, we're so excited to be working with Domi to address speeding on Marshall Avenue. Presley Ridge School is there with hundreds of students with disabilities, and people fly down that street. Residents' cars are hit regularly, so we're very grateful for that. We're excited about lead pipes, finally. You know, historic wrong of exposing our community to toxic lead is being reversed. However, now our sidewalks are bad. They were already bad, but now they're way worse because residents weren't able to fix them in the first place, and now we've just broken more and more of them. And lastly, please put money towards picking up our old TVs. We don't have anywhere to pick them up on the north side, and we're tired of finding them in the woods. Thank you.
Thanks, Joanna. Carlin? Hey, good morning. Welcome. I'm sorry, I can't pronounce this correctly. Marnie Schleikin? Thank you. Hey, welcome.
Welcome. Good morning. My name is Carlin Lombardo, and I am a resident of Greenfield, and I'm here today to represent the Pittsburgh Food Policy Council. The Pittsburgh Food Policy Council works to build a food system that benefits our communities, our economy, and our environment in ways that are just equitable and sustainable for all. We're guided by a model of collective impact. The Food Policy Council convenes over 100 entities from across our region's food system to create spaces for mutual learning and coordination of initiatives and policies that expand healthy food access, land use for agricultural purposes, public health, local sustainable agriculture, and equitable development, particularly in low-income communities. Since 2017, the council has led the Greater Pittsburgh Food Action Plan. This project is a community-centered approach to a policy roadmap and action plan of strategies that prioritizes healthy, affordable, and sustainable food for all residents. In the council's view, food equity is the expansive concept that all people have the ability and opportunity to grow and consume healthful, affordable, and culturally significant foods. Food equity requires that food systems be democratically controlled and that community stakeholders determine the policies that influence their food system. In the council's quest to identify and engage in food policy at the local level, I'm here today to express the support of the Pittsburgh Food Policy Council for the budget platform of the Economic Justice Circle. We too seek a clear understanding of the city's investments in our food system, be that through direct project funding, staffing commitments, and/or other specific supports for plans such as the Climate Action Plan. We believe increased transparency and improved communication channels, as proposed by the Economic Justice Circle platform, will allow the council to more effectively engage our broad network, community leaders, government partners, and public resources to more effectively address food system challenges like land access, building healthy communities, and food equity. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you so much. Okay, Marnie, you're next. And you'll be followed by Randy Sargent. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm Marnie Schilkin. I'm the Chief Program Officer. I'm the Chief Program Officer for the Greater Pittsburgh Community Food Bank with our headquarters at 1 North Linden Street in Duquesne. At this outset, I just want to extend my appreciation of all food bank stakeholders for this Council's steadfast support over many years. Our President and CEO, Lisa Scales, asked me to convey her thanks, as well as her regrets for not being available for today's hearing. The Food Bank respectfully requests a CDBG allocation of $150,000 for 2020. These funds will be used to support city-based food assistance providers with the greatest need. Money on account extended to these providers will allow the Food Bank to provide vital nutritional assistance, which might not otherwise be available to residents in Pittsburgh's low-income neighborhoods. The CDBG allocation will also enable the monthly direct distributions of food in Homewood and Sheridan, and on the south side and the north side. Known as Produce to People, these distributions provide fruit, vegetables, and other foods to residents who do not have easy access to fresh produce or the financial means to purchase it. The entire CDBG grant will be used just for these two purposes. No part of the grant will be used for salaries or any other overhead expenses. Nearly 1 in 5 Pittsburghers experience food insecurity, meaning they are uncertain of having enough food to meet basic needs at some time during the year. Food insecurity, as my colleagues have attested, has serious consequences for people throughout their lifespan. It increases health problems among children and seniors, and it decreases productivity for working-age adults. It often forces hungry Pittsburghers to choose between paying for food and other essentials such as rent, heat, and medicine. It's a big problem with severe impacts, and of course, we don't expect city government to assume complete responsibility for its solution. That's why the Food Bank engages individuals, businesses, nonprofits, and foundations in support of our efforts. That's why we also work with state and federal government to maximize the benefit of anti-hunger programs. What we ask of you is your continued commitment to do what you can through the CDBG program to address hunger in the city. We recognize the hard choices council must make in allocating scarce resources. We and the people we serve appreciate what you have done in past years under difficult circumstances. The Food Bank, our food pantries and partners throughout the city, and the thousands of Pittsburghers challenged by hunger still need your help and support. Thank you.
Here's Randy. Randy, you'll be followed by Reverend John Seize. Welcome. Thanks for coming down.
Thank you. My name is Randy Sargent, and I live at 3634 Fraser Street, 15213. Together with fellow residents, some of whom are in this room, we founded and run an after-school technology and arts program in South Oakland, serving a 90% black population of local kids. Over recent decades, as rents have gone up faster than incomes of our residents, we in Oakland have lost 40% of our black neighbors. In the past three years, as I've been helping run our after-school program, I've watched six families of our kids lose their housing, all families of color. I've seen our evicted children and parents broken up when they become homeless. I've seen our parents and children lose their possessions on the curb when they have no place to bring them. And I regret most that I have seen some of our youth lose their way after displacement away from friends and supports to neighborhoods with reduced public transit and opportunity. From my and my colleagues' work at Carnegie Mellon's Create Lab, we see today data from the federal HMDA showing our city's black families have much lower access to financing and are disproportionately denied financing for home purchase and renovation. And we know firsthand from our gentrifying neighborhoods that not owning your home when property values start to go up puts a family at very high risk of displacement. For all these reasons, I'm grateful to the Council and all those who have worked for passage of the Housing Opportunity Fund to increase resources for our families in need of sustainable housing. But when I observe the proposed budget reducing millions from housing, I ask if we are really prioritizing housing as we have declared, or are we moving money around? I ask that we please restore the housing funding levels for fiscal year 2020. As our cities report on equity across race and gender documents, our black families endure many economic injustices beyond housing. Black family income is disproportionately low. Indeed, our city, by the metric of workplace segregation of our city's black men into lower-income professions, Pittsburgh is more extremely segregated than 99% of similar cities in the US. I ask that our city government puts more resources and higher priority into equitable employment and prioritizing contracts with local minority-owned businesses. I urge this Council and Mayor to listen to calls today for increased transparency in the budget process. It is in a fully transparent process that democracy is best able to share power with those represented. Let's increase the transparency of how our city's monies are budgeted and spent so that we can increase engagement and accountably measure the improvements we need to make as a city. Finally, I want to acknowledge my role as part of a university that is itself a driver of gentrification and inequity in Pittsburgh, and that my university, like the city, must increase its efforts to produce the equity our city's residents deserve.
Thank you, Randy. First, thank you. Reverend Seize, welcome. You'll be followed by Jackie Smith.
Thanks. Good morning. Hi, good morning. My name is John Creasy, lifelong resident of Pittsburgh, Stanton Heights neighborhood, past 10 years. For the past 15 years, I've pastored a church called The Open Door Presbyterian Church in Garfield, and worked together with the church and many neighborhood organizations and people in the neighborhood to establish one of Pittsburgh's largest urban farming projects called Garfield Community Farm. Through our work with people in Garfield and with farming these three acres of land, I've become more and more aware of our city's racial, economic, and environmental challenges. I've also seen a desire that our city continue to be a leader in climate action. We need an open and transparent budget process that includes more input from the margins of our community, being sure that those people who are often left out have a strong and audible voice. I was excited to see the city's proposed energy efficiency legislation to ensure that new city buildings and those undergoing renovations will be required to be net zero. The world is watching us and celebrating with us as we make declarations and legislative decisions around climate change, but our proposed budget doesn't go far enough in putting our commitments into action. The city's budget must reflect our commitments to address pollution and the climate crisis. This year's budget should be updated to lay out requirements for new buildings and renovation projects, and reflect the anticipated costs of those upgrades toward net-zero buildings. To meet our goals for carbon reduction by 2030, we need to complete at least seven or eight building renovations per year. This year, we only have two in the making, and they're not fully funded. The city's budget for 2020 can also address things like our old street lighting, as you've already heard. The city's streetlights account for almost half of our city municipal energy use. That's a lot, and we can make these changes very easily. This is the low-lying fruit around climate action, changing light bulbs. We've all done it in our homes. We can do it on our streets and make a real difference. It's not for show. It will reduce our bills and pay for itself very quickly. I ask that we change the budget and take these things into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Jackie Smith, good morning, welcome. You'll be followed by Kenneth Regal.
Good morning.
Yeah, great, thank you for leaving it. We're happy to take it.
Good morning, and thank you. My name is Jackie Smith. I'm at 7728 Edgerton Avenue in Park Place neighborhood. I'm going to begin my remarks wearing my professional hat as a sociologist at the University of Pittsburgh, and point out that the conventional wisdom says that the business of politics is business, and that if political leaders listen to the people who want to use our city as a business opportunity and a chance to make profits, that economic growth will happen, and that will trickle down and benefit everybody in society. As a sociologist, I want to point out that there is very little evidence to support the trickle-down theory of economics. And even economists, like the former chief economist at the World Bank and Nobel laureate Joseph Stiglitz, is coming around to the reality that market fundamentalism is not a good guide to public policy. It's done irreparable harm to our cities. It's caused a global housing crisis that has been displacing the most vulnerable residents of our cities and undermining the social fabric of our communities, and it's exacerbating a public health crisis that is also global in scope. And there's an alarming study that the Blue Cross Blue Shield put out showing that younger generations are facing higher levels of the most common diseases than older generations. Our health is declining. The Gender Equity Commission's report illustrated as well how public policies are undermining the health of residents, especially those who are most vulnerable, and we heard powerful testimony last week on the public health effects of racism. The World Health Organization in 2016 issued a State of the Urban Health Report, then pointed out that throughout history, most of the world's cities have been planned without human health in mind. We need to change that script. Tomorrow is Human Rights Day, December 10th. The city declared itself in 2011 a human rights city, and the mayor has repeatedly stressed his commitment to leading on the Sustainable Development Goals of the international community. We're calling on you to close that gap between the rhetoric of human rights and the realities of public policy that has not really served the interests of our cities. We want Pittsburgh to be a leader on human rights, and we want to join other cities around the country as we participate in an official review of US human rights policy, and where we're putting together, along with many of the groups in this room, recommendations for how we can improve, how we can learn from cities around the country. And in the packet that I've provided, I include the Southern Mayor's Agenda that includes a dignity economy and a human rights and development agenda that we can use. Thank you. Thank you. Kenneth Regal?
Good morning.
Good morning, members of council. My name is Ken Regal. I live on Jackson Street in Highland Park, and I serve as the Executive Director of Just Harvest, a center for action against hunger based on Pittsburgh's south side. As you know, Just Harvest works to address the root causes of hunger and poverty in our community, connecting people in need to public benefits, and working to ensure access to healthy food to all people. It is often said that a public budget is an expression of a community's values, of its priorities, of what problems it believes are important to solve. It is disturbing, therefore, to find that neither the word "hunger" nor the word "poverty" ever appears in the combined 587 pages of the proposed operating and capital budgets of the city for 2020. The word "poor" appears precisely once, when the city highlights a key improvement, not in the condition of any poor people, but in the city's bond rating by standard and pores. The phrase "food security" can be found only when the Office of Equity cites as one of its 2019 accomplishments that it has researched and supported myriad issues, including food security. But action on that research and support in the Office of Equity's 2020 goals is nowhere to be found. One might take comfort to see that the phrase "food access" does appear on page 204 of the operating budget, where the city declares that one of the goals of the Office of Special Events in the Department of Public Safety is to "expand food access throughout the city by implementing and improving farmers' markets, community, and vendor relations." Elsewhere in the document, the Planning Department cites its completion of a report on strengthening farmers' markets as one of its accomplishments, while the accomplishments of the Office of Special Events includes the expansion of a farmers' market program with a monthly market in Larimer. Sadly, though, the proposed 2020 budget neglects to point out that that very same office, taking pride in that accomplishment, is right now discussing eliminating the Larimer market, as well as another one in Bechview. There is no indication in the proposed budget that the city intends to take any action or invest any resources in implementing the recommendation of the Planning Department's study of farmers' markets, or in enhancing or supporting the neighborhood farmers' markets that exist, or any other mechanisms to improve food access. If indeed this is a document that expresses our values and priorities, it is a deeply disappointing budget that ignores the fundamental need for and the human right to food for the tens of thousands of our neighbors who struggle to keep food on the table. Members of council, citizens of Pittsburgh, we can and must do better.
Good morning. Good morning. My name is Amber Book. I'm 5232 Holm Street, District 7. So I'm here to speak on behalf of Greater Pittsburgh Community Food Bank. I've worked there for six and a half years, and I am here to talk about fully supporting the Community Development Budget Grant, or Block Grant, sorry, to help us feed our neighbors in need. I don't have a lot of stats, and I don't have a lot of numbers to give you, but what I do have, and what I have been doing with my time at the Food Bank, is working a lot with individuals and people. A lot of the stories, you think, this can't be true, this is very stereotypical things, but when you're sitting there listening to somebody tell you about their story with tears in their eyes, barely able to finish their SNAP application because they're so nervous and scared about what's going to happen to them, it's very hard to ignore the fact that all these stories are very real, and these are very real people. I love this city. I've been here, born and raised here, and I know that the city of Pittsburgh cares for its people, and I appreciate all that you have done, and I know that we can do more and make sure that all the people in the city are taken care of and have everything they need to survive, especially food, because that is kind of the foundation of what everybody needs. I've talked to women, a woman who has, she's a grandmother, but she is caring for her daughter's three children because her daughter is in rehab. She has $5 in her account, and it is the 15th of the month, and she is not going to get paid until the end of the month, stressed and scared, and not knowing what she's going to do to feed these three children that she has care over. There's an individual, a gentleman, who recently got laid off from the Riverbends Food, the former Heinz plant. So in partnership with Career Links, we were able to help him, and he was told he was going to have severance and health insurance, but since it was a bankruptcy issue, he was denied both, and so now he has nothing. And he's in a training program, he's doing everything he's supposed to be doing, but he still has no way to feed himself because of the situation that was out of his control. I've helped a woman who has terminal cancer, and she needed SNAP, she needed food stamps to help her and provide her with the Ensure drink, which is the only thing that she could drink at that point in time because everything else upset her stomach too much. These are real people, and they really need your help, and they need the support of the city and all the state and locals, too. Thank you.
Yep, thank you, Amber. Our next speaker is Jennifer Rafanen Kennedy. She was unable to stay, even though she came this morning. She did submit her comment via email, so we have a public record of Jennifer's comment. Next, we have Alfred DeRosa. Hi, Alfred, good morning, welcome. You'll be followed by Marcia Bandas.
All right, Alfred DeRosa, 439 Rebecca Avenue, Pittsburgh, PA 15221. As someone who has worked in community development in Hazelwood over the past five years, I have become familiar with many of the daily challenges with mobility and transit faced by residents. I know people in wheelchairs that have been stuck in cracks on Second Avenue sidewalks. I see students attempting to cross that same street at intersections without working pedestrian signals, and hear calls for weekend service for the 93 bus during transit discussions in Hazelwood. For the sake of safety and access, the value and utility of directing public funds to solving these basic issues should be obvious, and any large transit project that claims to improve safety and access in Hazelwood that does not address these basic issues should be met with scrutiny and suspicion. The MOC does nothing to solve any of Hazelwood's basic transit issues, and it's not surprising given the lack of public involvement in the project. I'm encouraged to hear of the possibility of diverting funds. I'm encouraged to hear of the possibility of diverting funds from the MOC to fund these basic improvements and others included in the "Our Money, Our Solutions" proposal. More public projects would be better served by having residents at the table of development to ensure public dollars and public needs are better aligned. To continue spending millions of dollars on the MOC, a project driven by the private interests of the universities, hospitals, and Hazelwood Green, would show in stark terms a disconnect between public needs and public dollars. I urge council members to use your power to direct funds away from the MOC and towards a truly holistic, equitable, and publicly informed package of improvements for affected communities as outlined in the "Our Money, Our Solutions" proposal. Thank you.
Great, thank you. It was good. Okay. Hi, Marcia, good morning. You'll be followed by Roger Day. Thank you for being here.
Yeah, hello. My name is Marcia Bandes from Squirrel Hill, 15217. And I gather from everything that everybody has said, that I assume that you agree that two forms on the budget is inadequate for community input, and that we need more transparency, more openness. So what I suggest here, and this may not be the right answer, but it is just to get you thinking outside the box a little bit, is so as in addition to meetings starting in June, a series of 30- to 45-minute podcasts, updated monthly as needed, clearly labeled by topic. These podcasts with easily downloadable supporting material should include the budget, what's new, changes, and increases and decreases in the various budgets. And where applicable, the reasons for the increases and the decreases. The benefit of this approach is that there will be more people, will be provided with more time to look at the budget and to understand what it means. And so organizations that are interested in the budget but may not have the time to come to a forum or to spend hours and hours trying to decipher the budget, the podcasts would allow organizers to hone in on the areas that are meaningful to them: housing, parking, streets, safety, food. And that these organizations can then, you know, and other individuals who are interested in learning more can also look at it on an as-needed or as-desired basis. Then also, I think that it's time for us to just take a look at how people access the information. You've got it all, it's not very readable, so look at different ways that we can make it available to citizens and to organizations. Pittsburgh United, you know, Casa San Jose, Transportation, obviously the Four Mile Run and other organizations, they could use this information, and they could use it starting in June to start looking at what you're looking at, what the mayor is looking at, and then how it changes over time, so they can provide input on an ongoing basis. The other thing that I have to bring up, I guess that's a little bit like a stone in your shoe, but Pittsburgh cannot spend its way out of the issues that we face. Citizens need to be paid a living wage. And I understand about the Home Rule Charter, I also understand about our gerrymandered state. What I would like to see is a Pennsylvania Mayor's Conference, where they can talk about issues and how to change the status quo to get them solved. I would like to know that our council members, our URA leaders, our budget people are reaching out and speaking with their peers in other towns and cities. I can't believe that Erie, Scranton, and other cities are not facing the same challenges as Pittsburgh. I want to see Pittsburgh take the lead in building a coalition to address these issues and force the hands of our legislature to do what's needed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Roger, are you with us this morning? Yes, okay. Followed by Ken Crable. Oh, I'm sorry, I did say that. Good morning, Roger.
Good morning, and thank you, city council members, for being here and being really attentive, and I do appreciate that. I am from Squirrel Hill, 15217, a highly privileged neighborhood, as you know, and we get stuff we like, like speed bumps along Beechwood Boulevard and so forth. Hearing the troubles that residents of Hazelwood have, though, with traffic, dangerous situations, and the struggles to get their needs addressed for a long time is really distressing to me. I know the council is committed to social justice, but I think we need to see a lot of action behind that. It would be great to see that crystallize in action. So that was all off-topic. I'm here to talk about the street lighting situation in Pittsburgh. So I think you know most of the issues, you know that investments in changing out to LEDs will give you a tremendous return, a five-year payback period after that. It's all gravy, and you have long-lasting bulbs that will not have to be replaced sufficiently, so you know all that, and I won't go into that very much. There is also some high-tech aspects of sensors to check traffic and air quality. CMU's developed some of these. But some of these efforts go back a long way, they go back to 2008, the earliest I can see, and yet it seems to have progressed very slowly. In the budget, I can't find items for that. The only reference to lighting that I saw had to do with a state grant that we were receiving, and a very, very, very small one. So maybe there is in there somewhere, but I didn't see it. So I'm going to get off of that kick to the other side of lighting, which is insufficient lighting in some of the neighborhoods that really need it. So let me tell you a little bit about that. I've worked a lot with folks in Homewood in the last few years, with Sierra Club, with Operation Better Block and so forth. I'm a volunteer with Sierra Club, also Casa San Jose, and on the Board of GASP. And I've gotten to know a couple of dozen of the Homewood residents pretty well through these joint projects, energy efficiency, you should see how I'm doing, and especially street cleanups, and it's actually fun to be out with these people on the streets cleaning things up. I like that a lot. In our monthly meetings, one concern came up over and over again, that's poor street lighting. And there's two aspects. One is fearing for personal safety, and the other is watching incessant illegal dumping in all these vacant lots by outsiders that think it's nobody cares. Well, people do care. And so bottom line is, just tell us what you're doing about these things and think about that.
Great. Roger, thank you. Yep, perfect, thank you, Fred. Is Fred Crable with us this?
He will be here if he asks.
Sure, and then our final registered speaker will be William Butler. Good morning.
Hi, hello. My name is Fred Crable. I live in Point Breeze. I volunteer with five climate action groups, and I'm here to ask council to add action on climate change into the budget. Thank you for this opportunity to comment, and please keep allowing city residents the opportunity to comment on the budget process. Pittsburgh city leaders have worked hard and are to be commended for turning this city around and helping us emerge from our financial distress status under Act 47. A lot of Pittsburgh financial problems came from our dependence on our heavily polluting industry, the steel industry. And when the steel industry left town, it devastated Pittsburgh's finances. We now have an opportunity to build a better city running on renewable energy with clean electric vehicles. Ironically, Western PA has a cloud hanging over it in the form of another heavily polluting industry, which is fracking natural gas and plastics. This industry has a lot of money and clout. Kudos to Mayor Paduto for speaking out in opposition to the expansion of the cracker plants. Pittsburgh can join the renewable energy future. Indeed, we are seeing signs of it at Hazelwood Green on Mill 19, where construction is underway for one of the largest solar arrays in Western PA. By 2021, over a two-year period, the U.S. will see about 30 gigawatts of wind and 20 gigawatts of solar added to the grid. This is a huge expansion of renewable energy, which will increase our current renewable energy fleet by about 30%. This was brought to you by our previous president and a 2015 bill to extend tax credits for renewable energy. Unfortunately, most of that clean energy investment will be in the West, Midwest, and Northeast, but not so much in Western PA. Western PA is stymied by a president, a U.S. Senate, and a state legislature that denies the reality of climate change. Philadelphia is not standing by idly with the inaction of the state and federal government. Philadelphia signed a power purchase agreement to get a 70-megawatt solar farm built. The power of this purchase creates demand for clean energy, which it did not exist, and pushes fossil fuel generation to the margins. Pittsburgh is also not standing idly by. We have been adding electric vehicles to our fleet, among other initiatives. So we want to call on Pittsburgh to do even more. Put money in the budget to switch streetlights to LEDs. Put money in the budget to retrofit municipal buildings for more energy efficiency. Put money in the budget for renewable energy. Let's build a better future, because America will take bold action to cut climate pollution.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, Mr. Butler, are you here? Good morning, welcome. Thanks for your patience.
Thank you. I am a new resident to Pittsburgh. I moved here from Atlanta. I retired after 50 years working in the film and television production industry. My daughter went to Pitt, and I couldn't get her to come back. I was diagnosed with cancer, and she lobbied for me to come to Pittsburgh. And one of the things that I learned about this through the economic circle of Pittsburgh and the Sierra Club, and I felt compelled to come and leave a few thoughts behind. I have 20 years also in public service, volunteering, being on community planning boards in New York and in Atlanta, advising cultural affairs, and establishing an association for African-American film professionals, advocacy group. And I'm very much say Pittsburgh's a lovely place, glad to be here. I live in Penn Hills, and like Atlanta, anything near Atlanta becomes Atlanta, so I don't know how close I am to being in Pittsburgh, but I certainly feel a part of it, and I thank you. I want to say that environmental issues and concern about everyday citizens and livings are very important. They're much more important than people tend to give strength to, and I hope that that will stick out as you come into, considering all the things that you've heard here today. I don't have any wish to repeat them, but I think it's very important to support them. I also feel that when children learn about what we did in our lifetimes, whether we're here or not, I want them to say, "We did the right thing." I don't want them to remember us as being selfish and greedy and insensitive, and that is exactly what will happen, and history says that is what will happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so that exhausts the list of registered speakers. If there are other people in attendance this morning that wish to address council, you're welcome to line up. You'll get your one minute, but I will advise you in advance that one minute, it just flies by. So, good morning, welcome again. We'll just need your name and the neighborhood in which you reside, please.
Hi, my name is Karen Mitchell. I reside in District 2, and I'm here as a representative of the Salvation Army Westside Corps. And we do a lot of emergency services, from utility assistance to disaster relief, but one thing I'm here to talk about today is what we do to battle food insecurities. We do a distribution once a month, and we also do emergency food daily. In 2019, with the Help With the Community Block Grant, we were able to, we received $1,500, and through this money, we distributed 4,000 pounds of product, and 10,000 pounds were fresh produce, as well as more than 10,000 was fresh proteins. During this 12 months, we serviced approximately 65 households and approximately 180 individuals. And of those individuals, a lot were, sorry, but I just wanted to say that, thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Appreciate it. Good morning, welcome.
My name's Kelsey Solano, and I live in the Hayes neighborhood, so I'll be quick. So who actually benefits from this opaque budget process? Because it's none of us here, and it's not the council either. The city loves to tout itself as livable and as climate champions, but little has actually been done to act on those goals beyond feasibility studies and lip service. From my perspective, as someone who lives in a floodplain, I have one bus option with limited times, sidewalks with a score of four out of 100 for walkability, elevated air pollution levels, poor lighting. And someone who cares about an equitable and inclusive budget process, the city has fallen short in all of these areas. The city should create an open, accessible budget process that everyone can actually understand and participate in, and that centers the needs of the most vulnerable and impacted residents of our city. I would love the city to expand transit, housing, and pathways that reduce energy, like updating the 60-year-old streetlights, and actually putting money towards the energy efficiency legislation, and that money can be reinvested into flood mitigation, racial, and economic justice.
Perfect, thank you so much. Good morning.
Good morning, council. My name is Khalid Rahim. I'm from the North Side community. I live in the neighborhood of Manchester, 15233. As we've all heard this morning and on many previous mornings and afternoons, there's a disproportionate number of Black people within the city of Pittsburgh who continue to suffer all the different issues and all the things that folks have already talked about, whether we're talking about housing, we talk about economic justice, we're talking about income disparity, we talk about criminal justice reform and the need for it. So once again, I just want to reiterate, in terms of a budgetary item specifically, I want to call upon the city to include funding for a reparations commission to facilitate the process of organizing and distributing reparations to the Black residents of the city of Pittsburgh. Once again, if Black people here within the city of Pittsburgh continue to be the disproportionate representatives of gross social injustice and inequity, we deserve reparations.
Thank you. Good morning, welcome.
Hello, my name is Lisa Gonzalez. I'm from Cary, 15210. I'm representing PPT and PER, Pittsburgh Union of Regional Renters. We need a commitment from city council on affordable housing, mobility, and transportation. Expand HOV funds, not takeaway. This city is leaving people of color and the poor behind. Low-income residents are being evicted because of increasing rent. Rent, that is unacceptable. Who do you serve? The rich or all the city of Pittsburgh, which includes all? Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, welcome.
Hi, my name is Denise Galpern. I live on Willard Street in Point Breeze. I'm here as a concerned and curious citizen at the encouragement of the Sierra Club. I would just like to add my voice to the calls for support for the food bank and other hunger programs, for the transparency of the budget process, and to updating the streetlights across the city in all income levels. Thanks.
Great, thank you so much. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Bonnie Fan. I'm here as a graduate student in Policy and Data Analytics at CMU. I research technology and public process in cities, and I believe that the public process in Pittsburgh is broken. One example is the lack of an Open Meetings Act here. Another example is the Mon Oakland Connector, which prioritizes private interests, including Uber and CMU, over resident interests, as we've heard multiple times today. How is it that sidewalks are not fixed and a multimillion-dollar micro mobility connector's being pushed today? Pittsburgh needs to learn from the lessons of the sidewalk labs in Toronto and other cities where futuristic private interests have been pushed at the expense of resident trust. Another example is the lack of transparency and the use of technology by Pittsburgh Police, in particular predictive policing model that has been in use for three years in partnership with CMU, and has bypassed both council and community input. This has been a strategic priority on the budget book for three years, including this one. Can the city of Pittsburgh stop paving over and harming Pittsburgh residents in the name of technology? We need transparency and a plan to prioritize actual resident needs over private interests. We need a just city, not a smart city.
Thanks.
Hi, welcome, good morning.
Good morning, good morning, council. My name is William Anderson. I live at 7035 Chaucer Street in Pittsburgh, PA. Today, I'm here wearing two hats addressing this issue. I'm a member of all of the organizations that preceded me. I'm also a member of BPEP, the Black Political Empowerment Project, where a few years ago... So, our biggest thing that we are fighting for is transparency in this budget. When we have a mayor that talked about the head of the City of Pittsburgh School Board and demanded transparency in their process and got their process because the school board is larger, budget is larger than the City of Pittsburgh, and demanded transparency from the school board, I expect the mayor to demand the same transparency in his own action and his own budgets. As we know, the mayor's and my city councilman from District 9 have not invested in our community, and we have a broken PLI system that demolishes, illegally demolishes, and condemns property without any upkeep.
Thanks, welcome. Appreciate it. Hey, good morning.
My name is Heather Mall. I'm a Hazelwood resident, 570 Kilborn Street. For decades, Hazelwood and the Run are neighborhoods that have been ill-considered in favor of road building. In fact, when I was looking to buy my house in 2005, my main concern was the Mon Fayette Expressway, which was threatening to raise the entire business district of the neighborhood and other problems. Pleasantly, the plan was shelved after I took a gamble and bought my house, but over the years since, there's been a series of other threats and challenges, such as cutbacks to the Port Authority bus routes, large-scale demolition of buildings, school closures, and other disinvestments in the neighborhood by the city, until, of course, Amazon expressed its interests. Though I appreciate the nice bike and pedestrian pathways on the old LTV site, I suspect they weren't created by the city for my neighbors and I, but for future residents like tech workers who work for, who've been vying for gigs for billionaire union-busting tax evaders like Jeff Bezos, I'd like to see the city consider us the current residents first this time instead of a roadway. Please choose to invest our public dollars and taxpayer funds into existing public transit, sidewalk infrastructure, stormwater remediation, et cetera.
Thank you. Hey, good morning.
Hi, I live at 841 Holland Avenue, Apartment 2, Pittsburgh 15221. I am a substitute teacher in the Pittsburgh Public School. I have never seen so many thin children in my life, under a certain age, and there's many people present that know that the brain is forming, up to four years old. This includes preschool children. So, we need these food banks, and we also need cleaner air for them to breathe. So, let's get out of Pittsburgh. Let's do what you said you would do. Let's be this wonderful green paradise. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay. You're gonna go first, okay? So, that does close the public comment portion of the council meeting. Just two things real fast that came up during the course of the meeting that I do want to clarify. The streetlights had come up a number of different times. Working with our budget director here, I just want to assure you that in the 2019 budget, $14 million was approved in our present budget that we're in right now for the correction or the installation of LED streetlights. Please don't think we're not thinking about that. And then several weeks ago, when the budget first came over, I worked with our budget director to craft an amendment that would allocate $250,000 to our food service organizations, which we are committed to and we do every year, so please leave here assured that that amendment will be placed in the budget. With that, I want to open it up to first Councilwoman Strasberg, followed by Councilwoman Gross, and then followed by Councilwoman Smith.
Thank you, Council President. I want to thank you all for taking the time to speak out today, and wanted to touch on just a couple of issues before I have to get to a meeting. One is that I believe that the public, I agree with you, that the public needs to be at the, there at the beginning of the conversation for any kind of project, whether it's a development project or whether it's a crafting of the budget. And in fact, that's what I told the mayor when he was at the table at the budget hearings a few weeks ago. I give credit to our mayor's Office of Community Affairs, OCA, for the work that they currently do to allow for the two meetings, to allow residents to come and go through kind of a mini participatory budgeting process. We need to expand on that. I actually believe that it shouldn't start in June. It should be a 12-month project where residents are, you know, understanding not only the things that we're all talking about today, but actually digging into what it takes to fund our finance department, what it takes to fund our office of, you know, any kind of office or any kind of department or any kind of board or authority that we're not always thinking about as residents of the city, but to understand what it takes to be able to have a balanced budget and the trade-offs that you have to mull over and the tough decisions that we as council members and the mayor have to make every year. So, I would love to see a Congress of residents come together to form that, or at least come up with a plan to allow for an even more robust community process. Marshall, I love some of your ideas and making sure that there are ways to access, you know, the simplified version of the budget in snippets, whether it's a podcast or whether it's a video blog, or whether it is more, just more impactful webpages around what we're discussing throughout the year and starting in June as well. I also wanted to say that I'm on board with putting our money where our mouth is when it comes to climate change and sustainability. Look forward to meeting with the Sierra Club and other environmental advocacy organizations just later today to dig into these details, and look forward to working with all of you on what you addressed today. I know that Councilwoman O'Connor had to step out, and I know he was planning to come back as soon as possible, but his office and mine had a great conversation on Friday with Pittsburghers for Public Transit, and there are resolutions in the works to do what you're asking of us, maybe not in full, but to offer a resolution to commit to funding many of the projects, many of that are in his district but affect, you know, all of us throughout the city of Pittsburgh. So, I just wanted to say that as well. Thank you all for being here today.
Councilwoman, thank you. Councilwoman Gross.
Thank you, and I appreciate everyone staying this long, and thank you for coming down. I apologize I missed the beginning of the meeting. I was lobbying some state officials for some of their dollars for a facility in my district that could not be, it was scheduled many, many weeks in advance, so I hurried back down here from Bloomfield. And I appreciate you all being here. I took a lot of notes. I can watch the beginning of the session, as you can, on Legistar. I also want to start with the lobbying for the dollars that have been allocated around the Mon Oakland Connector, because I also had conversations with Councilwoman O'Connor last week, and I appreciate the input for Pittsburghers for Public Transit and all of your allies. We really need to center, I think, non-car uses in our mobility budgeting, right? I don't even want to call it transportation anymore, because it's so associated with the 20th century models that are just, you know, foreground and only about cars. And the important part for us as a city is that we are moving people, right? The streets are for people, and we just need to figure out where people need to go and how they can get there and how goods and services are available to them, right? And to support our local main streets, which are often not well-served by the big highway forms that are imposed upon us or that were so popular in the 20th century. And then, I also was particularly grateful to hear, not just about transparency in the budget, but also how we collectively at council and as residents can get a better grasp on the outcomes of our budgeting, right? So, the racial and gender outcomes of every budget decision we make, every line in the budget. I've got a policy document someplace back in my office, which, if you've seen it, is piled very high with paper and policy documents, that asks, "Are snowplows sexist?" Right? So, even in the budgeting and the assumptions that we make about, like, where we send our snowplows to clear streets, well, if you don't have a car, which a third of our residents don't, how does that really help you? Or does it? So, you know, I think we need to at least ask these questions, and so that we can decide together whether we agree with these budget allocations. And so, to really drill down and not assume that some things are relevant to racial or gender equity or class equity, to just go ahead and to be able to ask the question, and then, and when we get the answers, then we have a conversation about what is, what are the impacts of our budget assumptions, and do we want to revisit those assumptions? So, I was very glad to hear about that, and thank you all again for coming down and for staying so long. So, yes, I would very much like to have a more robust conversation about reducing energy costs, improving transportation funding and mobility funding and housing. Thank you for being here.
Great, thank you. Hey, Councilwoman Kel Smith.
I really don't have much to add. I think my colleagues have said, and you have all said, just about everything that needed to be said, to be quite honest. I want to thank you all for being here, but I am going to say a couple of things. I want to, I know, hear people talking about the importance of having transparency and input on the budget. I really think that this administration has done more in terms of engaging the public than anyone I've seen in the past. And I, I don't care whether you agree or not, I know that I have actually seen more engagement than I have, and I've been involved for 25 years before I even got into this office. So, I know what level I had before, I know what level there is now. So, I do, I don't want to say that the administration is not reaching out and not engaging people. Does that mean you want more engagement? That's the conversation we need to have, but to say that there's been no transparency and no conversations in the budget is just not accurate. There's more tools now than there's ever been to, you know, give input. I do, I heard the comments for needing for funding, and I really appreciate the Produce to the People project that's in Sheridan, and they do a ton of work, and it's really, it's a beneficial program to our community. I'd like to see us do more in terms of the food, food policies and to address the hunger issues in our communities. It's really horrific and what's going on right now, even though there is a lot of resources and a lot of money and more community gardens and all those things, it's just really has been really difficult to watch some of our residents suffering and struggling just to put a meal on the table. I mean, even with all the help that we try to put in, I think we need to be more thoughtful in how we're delivering some of those services. I do want to say there's also needs to be accountability, because I've heard people speak about the things that they do in the communities, and I'm out in my communities every day. I know what goes on. I know sometimes some of the produce and some of the things that are being distributed, or some of the toys that are being distributed from Toys for Tots are sometimes picked over by people that don't really necessarily need those resources, so then it doesn't allow for the people that really do need it. And so, I see it, and it's disturbing, because I want to make sure that that money is going towards, to the people that truly do need it. And I think if, you know, accountability and making sure that we have some, some folks looking over that, making sure people are qualified for the funding or whatever the prop, whatever it is that we're distributing. I know that we do it somehow through CDBG money, but I still see it quite often. I mean, it's sad, to be honest with you. I mean, I went to a Toys for Tots event, and the people that picked over the toy, I mean, it was heartbreaking, because you knew that there was little kids coming in that really needed it, and yet, they didn't get those things. And so, so I just want accountability when it comes to this. I would, I would give anything. I mean, people that know me know that I would give anything I had to see people not struggling and to see people not hurting, but I want to see it going really to people that really need it. And with that said, and I'm really still willing to work with the folks on the Mon Oakland Connector, because I was born and raised on Fifth Avenue in Oakland, and I know that there's a lot of concerns for residents there as well. And so, I really don't want to see a voice, your voice silenced, because this is a project that other people are so very supportive of. So, I think there's going to be some way, and I hear Councilwoman, I hear you saying, I hear Councilwoman Strasberger mentioning that, and you mentioned as well, that you're going to work on some amendments that benefit Councilwoman O'Connor's district, but I will say that just because a project that is millions of dollars is going into that area, that doesn't mean that that community is any more deserving than the community that doesn't have that kind of project going in. And so, if we're going to fix sidewalks in, you know, Hazelwood and other places, we need to fix sidewalks in Esplan and Ferrywood and other places as well. So, I just want to say that I'm willing to work with everybody on these things. So, thank you very much for being here. And I will mention this one thing about the lead in Pittsburgh Public Schools. When I actually had the first post-agenda, that we uncovered that there was lead and problems with the meters, and so, that was, that was something I really pride myself on, making sure that we stayed on that. But at the time, I sent an email to Pittsburgh Public Schools, asking them to check their schools and their children and test their children for lead, and now we're hearing about 18 schools with lead in the building, I mean, years later. So, sometimes I get frustrated as well when we don't, you know, work so well with the Pittsburgh Public Schools, because these are our families, you know, these are our kids, and they're our future. And so, I'd like to see us do a little bit more in working collaboratively to address issues there, including the lead crisis now. So, thank you all for being here.
Okay, thanks, Councilwoman. So, before we adjourn the meeting, I'll just make one correction to the remarks that I made earlier. I was reminded by our budget office, our allocation request for community development block grant dollars to feed our hunger organizations is $250,000. It's $30,000 more than the council allocated in 2019, which was $200,000, $220,000, forgive me, and I have every confidence that this council will support the amendment and that we will meet our obligation to, to feed our hunger organizations. So, thank you so very much for being here this morning. May I please have a motion to adjourn this public hearing?
So, move.
Second.
Second.[1731.41]